We are going to call the monthly meeting to order and first I apologize for us being a couple of minutes late, so we will try to finish six minutes early. So there you go. So that's what we will try to do here. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First, welcome to everybody who is in the room with us tonight and all of you who are watching online as well. So thank you for joining us and taking an interest in our district. We do appreciate it. 1.04 is the adoption of tonight's agenda, so we need a motion from a board member to do that, please.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda tonight. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously 6-0. It should be noted, Board Member Campbell is joining us on the phone tonight and Board Member Allen is not with us as he is traveling this evening. So that's why we are a little short up here at the front. Moving to 2.01, this will be our superintendent's report and we'll turn it over to Dr. Buck.
I'll make it quick. You have a written report, I just want to point out two things. We did host this last week, Kansas City Go Global KC event, so there was, this is a World Trade Centers across the world event. There were nine sites across the world, but in those nine sites, there were many, many countries represented. So we had major employers throughout the metro area come over to Innovation Campus and do a panel, and then individuals went to breakout virtual rooms, so there was people in person, but there would be people all over the world also discussing. So you might go to a room that's dealing with businesses that deal with Philippines, the country of the Philippines. So it was pretty fun and exciting because our kids helped host and run those rooms. So kudos to our high school kids that go to STA, which represent 32 different high schools throughout the region coming there. So definitely a regional event. And then the last one to point out, if you haven't listened to it, Dr. Barker did a great job with our three kids who went through the FBI Youth Leadership Academy. It was fantastic hearing from one of these programs. And welcome Highland Park, I can't wait to hear from you here in a minute.
Well, that was short. Nicely done. Wow. Okay. We're going to move on to 3.01, and that is going to be our elementary school spotlight, and so we are welcoming Highland Park. No, come on, we're ready, we're ready, let's do it. Yeah, so. We will turn it over to Highland Park Elementary.
Good evening. Thank you for taking your time in your meeting tonight to allow us to talk about our school, Highland Park Elementary. My name is Madeline Orff, I'm a sixth grade student at Highland Park.
My name is Hope. I am a third grade student. This year, our theme is be here, be you, belong. We want to take a few minutes to tell you what that means to us.
There's a quote that says, "If I get to be me, I belong. If I have to be like you, I fit in." Hope, what does that mean to you?
To be a, to be and to be different is good because if you're all the same, it would just be weird.
I agree, and I think if I do what other people expected me to do and I had to be like everyone else, people won't accept me for who I am. And if I got to be myself, people would accept me for my differences. I feel like that it's really good to accept people for who they are and everyone's differences. Hope, do you feel like you belong at Highland Park?
Yes, because everyone treats me so nicely and does not make me feel uncomfortable being in a wheelchair.
That's great. It is a point that all students and staff at HPE feel like that they belong.
I agree, Madeline. What can we do to help make sure that everyone feels that way?
I think that we should be kind and respectful to everyone, and like Hope said earlier, that if we're all the same, life would just be boring and it's a lot more fun looking at each other's differences. Now let's hear for a couple of friends from school.
At Highland Park, we help others feel like they belong. We welcome all adults and students to our building every day, and we accept and learn from each other.
What does belonging mean to you?
I think it means that I'm able to kind of collaborate with everybody around and not, not feel insecure.
How do you help others feel like they belong?
I welcome them where they are. If they're new to school, then I help them feel like they're at home, and I help them feel like that they're not alone, that they have friends and they're not, and they're included.
All right, nice. Do you feel like you belong at Highland Park and why?
Yeah, yes, I feel like I belong at Highland Park because I have a group of friends I hang out with and I get along with a lot of people.
All right. Diana, to you, what does it mean to belong?
To belong, it means to belong in something that you feel free doing.
And here at Highland Park, do you feel like you belong?
I do, because everybody belongs here even though you're different, because being different is not bad.
Hi, Brayden, do you feel like that you belong here at Highland Park?
Yes.
Why do you feel like you belong at Highland Park?
Because everybody is so friendly and I'm glad to see them.
What does belonging mean to you?
To me, belonging means everybody accepting you for who you are.
And how do you help others feel like they belong?
Say, a new kid came into our class and they were scared that they weren't going to have any friends. I would tell them it would be okay and that they would probably get friends once they got to know everybody.
All right, nice job.
What does belonging mean to me and how do all of our students at Highland Park feel like they belong? Belonging to me means that everyone just feels included, everyone feels valued, and that they are loved and trusted here. I feel like our students get that every day with our staff and with each other through our leadership skills, through our class mission statements and personal mission statements, and just through our class community that we build every single day to welcome each student and greet each one of them and make sure that they all know how much we care about each of them as learners and as individuals.
Each year, we choose a book for our classroom to have and to read to their students. This year, our book is Just Ask, and it really reminds us of the value of Habit Five, seek first to understand, then to be understood, something we all can learn from.
We would like to present the board with this book and encourage you to read it as you have time.
Thank you very much.
We would also like to invite you to our social media sites. Join us and take a peek into how we are looking at these words every day. Be here, be you, belong. Thank you again for giving us a few minutes of your time. It has been our pleasure to be able to share with you tonight.
And on behalf of Highland Park, I too thank you for giving our students a chance to be highlighted today and invite you anytime to walk through our doors and our hallways and see the great things they're doing every single day. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So nice to have a building back in here. So, thank you for being here, seriously. It is very nice to have people back in here, so. Okay, we are going to move on to item 3.02, and that's going to be our Lee Summit High School project update. So we have J.E. Dunn with us here. What? Right, we played golf on Saturday, so, you know, but he said I could call him Chili's.
That's true.
He told me, so.
I did approve Chili.
That's right. We will turn it over to you for the update, sir.
All right. It's weird, I feel like I'll need at least another hour sitting here. This is awesome. All right, so let's see where we're at. This big map is a whole, that's the footprint again of the building, and let me explain these colors here. So yellow was where we were at all this summer, and orange is that addition that you're starting to see, you know, the big monstrosity of metal right now, that is the addition. So the green is, the green is area, we're still, we're finishing up that, this portion of the L over here, we're finishing up this, and we're finishing up this. These are all occupied classrooms after the renovation, these all had major duckwork upgrades. So I'll start walking through some of that stuff, but, you know, we got a lot done this summer despite all the, you know, material woes that everybody's heard about. We found a way to get through, get them in, so they're functional, and they've got the upgraded MEP fixtures that really are what necessitate moving out of there and, you know, messing with ceilings and everything else. So we got a lot of that done, and that, what you see, there's the kitchen with the new, or sorry, the cafeteria with the new duckwork, and then the kitchen, you can see a little bit of it in that corner, but all that was a gray kind of concrete peeling up paint floor that's now all a nice epoxy floor finish, so a really big difference there. Locker rooms, all that duckwork, all that piping that you see up there is new so that they can have a much more pleasant space, environment that, that's feeding that area there. We, this big concrete floor, we'll get that epoxy finish next summer, but we did get a lot of the overhead infrastructure. There's major duckwork running through there feeding this space, there's new light fixtures, there's new ceiling grid, and then we did some, you know, finish changes here, all that was that dark brick, and now it's that nice, that nice white color brightened up quite a bit. And you'll be seeing some more splash ad here as this floor becomes epoxy in the next summer, and then this will start getting, you'll see that having a nice tile finish. So this is a rendering of, you know, final, once you get the floor in, kind of what they're going to be looking at. So that's, we got, we got the major overhead portion of that done this summer and got that, that new ceiling in, so. This is the bathrooms off of that PAC lobby, a good start to them with all the overhead infrastructure stuff that we got, and then the tile will work in, in that next summer, and this is what your final look's going to feel like off of those. These are the, this is the hallway and this is the new science room renovation, so you can see what those finishes look like there. More pictures of that, that area and the old A building, we call that Area J now, but this is, this is what those bathrooms now look like. This is a classroom that, those windows really open up the space, used to be little punch windows, so, big difference there. And then, this guy will be a big game changer, so this, these pictures don't really do justice how big this thing is, but you're welcome to come out and check it out with us anytime, but this is, this has changed a lot even from these pictures a few weeks ago. So you're getting that deck, that deck on, you've got the concrete slab poured, and this is just one portion of this addition, you know, that's something to remember when you're walking out there and see how big that is. We're actually right now only building this part, and then this part here in orange is what we're doing now, this little section here, there's actually a section that'll go more south where the administration is now, it's going to wrap around that whole admin and then tuck back in once admin moves into their new spot over in this area. Then you're going to have this whole, this whole addition, you're going to have a second story, breeze, not, not a breezeway anymore, but a full path over into the media center area, and then you're going to have that nice green space underneath that, it's going to be really enjoyable space, so. That'll be, addition one's going to end in the May, and then you're going to have the next area start, and then by that end of next year, you'll have all that addition complete, so that'll be exciting. This is an idea of kind of what that'll look like, this is that, this is that area we're building right now, and then you see where that second, that second phase will connect across that, that's where that cafeteria is sitting right now, where they used to walk out into that little circle hangout space, this is what that'll be. So it'll look really nice when it's done. And this is another picture, different view of the entrance there. So every month, we do post, so even if we're not presenting here, you can see our monthly updates on the website, we have that link right up here, but you're welcome to come to that anytime and you can see our monthly updates, and then let us know if you ever want to look at anything. Any questions?
Board Member Fritchy?
Well, I do have partly a comment and partly a question for you. We had the Lee Summit High School Hall of Fame induction on Saturday night in the lecture hall, and then we used the cafeteria for the dinner part of that. And what you said about supply issues, I guess the lighting hasn't come in yet, the correct lights for the cafeteria yet, so.
Yeah, they have temp lighting in there.
Yeah, so it's, it's a little, it's a little dim in there, but it was kind of like mood lighting for the, but the, the general consensus of the folks who were in there were like, this is really great, you know, this is, this is going to look awesome because of all of that brick that's now white. It sure brightens up that whole hallway into the Performing Arts Center, and then when we were setting up on Friday to get ready for that banquet, one of our teachers on the committee took us up and gave us a sneak peek of the classrooms that you finished, and the math area and science, and it's looking amazing. I mean, you guys have just been really knocking it out of the park, and the whiteboards in those hallways for that collaboration for students to be able to go out and work on those giant whiteboards for their math problems, that's just great. And I imagine the kids enjoy getting up and getting out of the classroom and getting out of their seats and going out there and doing that too, so. That must be pretty gratifying for you guys to see that happening too.
It is, it's neat, and that, that addition's going to be a game changer, that's, that's going to really be nice when that's complete.
Well, thanks a lot.
Thank you for that. And any other questions, comments?
You stole my line.
Is that your line?
All right, that'll, you're done.
That'll do.
All right, thanks sir, appreciate it.
All right. And we need, we get Dr. Buck at Lee Summit High School.
I don't know, we'll see. Okay, we are going to move on to item 4.01, that is going to be our public comments for tonight, and so I will turn it over to our parliamentarian, Board Member Hedrick.
We appreciate your attendance and willingness to speak to the board. Please remember that while this is a public meeting, this part of the meeting does not contemplate a conversation between speakers and board members. The board does not respond to public comments during the meeting but may ask clarifying questions. Your comments will be noted by the board, and if appropriate, we will direct the subject to the administrators who are responsible for that particular subject matter. Pursuant to Board Policy BDDH, we will be limiting all comments to more than, to no more than 10 people with a three-minute time limit each. Your allotted three minutes will be counted down on the screen, please conclude your comments when the timer expires. Only those who have signed up prior to the meeting will be allowed to address the board. Please remain from using the names of any students or staff in your remarks, remain respectful, and ensure your comments pertain to district operations. We also ask all audience members to remain respectful. Lastly, when your name is called, go to the podium and clearly state your name and the organization you represent, if any.
Thank you, Board Member Hedrick, I appreciate it. We have just two speakers tonight. The first will be Katie Gobin, and then the second will be Marla Stout. So Katie, is Katie here?
Hi, I'm Katie, I'm just a parent, I don't have an organization. So firstly, I just want to say, okay, cool. Oh, awesome. God, I hate public speaking. All right. So first of all, like I said, I'm Katie, I am just a parent, don't have an organization at all. Firstly, I want to say, I got pretty lucky at the school that my son goes to, I love Greenwood, I love all the staff, they have been pretty amazing with my son who has special needs, completely amazing. I found out though, over the summer, not all staff is trained to deal with kids with special needs, and some of them want to push them away or don't want to deal with them. My son was kicked out of summer school because they couldn't handle him. He's a six-year-old little boy who has issues, he has quite a few issues that he has to deal with, and we're working on it, and I've been working on it for over a year to get him help. I was basically told, we don't have the staff or the teaching to handle your son. So I've seen you guys throw money at training, but yet you have staff who can't handle a special needs child. I also learned that at times, while you have some really good people in your after-school program, some of them not so much. They don't want to be there or they don't want to deal with the kids. They expect these kids to behave the exact way they want. These are kids, they don't always act the way they want, and yes, they can be rowdy. They were at school all day. They're not military, they do not always follow directions. Again, they're kids. If we're expecting these kids to behave like grown adults, then where is their childhood? And I think it's pretty sad that these things are not noticed. I was told when I called to say something about the summer school, I was told, well, we don't have the staff, and there was a few kids that got kicked out of the summer school program. I was told my kid needed the summer school program because he had an issue his first year of kindergarten. I've also noticed that while you're pushing politics into the schools, you took church out a while ago, and I get it, not everybody has the same beliefs, but when it comes to politics, not everybody has the same beliefs, and these are kids. They don't understand, they are not mature enough to understand. Let them be kids. They need to be kids. My childhood is over, your guys' childhood is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Marla Stout.
I promise I had no insight into what Highland Park was going to present this evening because mine kind of goes, actually kind of goes hand in hand with theirs a little bit, but I went to, I'm on the CAC, and I went to CAC meeting last night, and I wasn't exactly sure what I was, I kind of knew what I thought I'd, what I was going to talk about or say tonight, but then something out of last night came to me and it seemed a lot more appropriate right now. So according to Maslow's hierarchy of needs, basic needs, including the need of belonging, must be met before an individual can advance to achievement and self-actualization. Studies have shown that the loneliness epidemic that results from the lack of belonging poses a greater health risk than obesity and is comparable to smoking almost an entire pack of cigarettes a day. In short, for a student to reach levels of real achievement, they must have the feeling of belonging within their spaces of learning. At LSR7, I believe, while the movement might not be happening as quickly as we all would like, progress is being made towards our goals for equity. Making our schools a more safe and inclusive environment for our children instills a sense of belonging, which ultimately should result in helping to close the achievement gap. Progress is administration reaching out to parents, business owners, and community members for feedback, even when they know the opinions might be hard to hear. Progress is teachers stepping up to sponsor clubs and spaces of inclusion like the VSU and GSA, even when they know many in our community will push back as certain groups being, as certain groups being given special privilege. Progress is a transgender child being nominated and crowned as homecoming royalty. Progress is staff wearing shirts, displaying signs, and stickers that welcome students of all colors, lifestyles, and faith into their classroom. Progress is staff members who continue to step up and continue to learn so that they can know better to do better. And I have to add, progress is students coming and telling you how they feel like they belong in their school. As our world evolves, so do our schools. Perfection is impossible, but progress should always be welcomed and acknowledged. So thank you to the administration, teachers, board members, staff, parents, and most importantly, students, who are working hard every day to take steps to progress. LSR7, our students and community, work.
Thank you very much. Thank you to both speakers tonight. We will move on to items five, to item, excuse me, 5.01, which is our board reports and meetings attended. As board members have noted probably, we have, we're trying out a little new system to make sure that we capture what's going on in meetings too, so that then we can give just nice brief summaries here at the actual board meeting of any meetings attended, so. You know what, we will start with Board Member Campbell, we'll let her lead off since she's on the phone here.
Thank you, President Murdock. I attended the Finance Committee meeting, and I know Board Member Hedrick will speak in more detail to that, and in this past month, that was the only committee meeting that I attended, but I do have a lot coming up in the future, so I will have much more to report at our next meeting.
Sounds good, no problem. Let's go to my right and we'll go to Board Member Sparks.
My committees are listed, and I just would like to encourage the parents to be able to go on and see what we're doing.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Board Member Fritchy?
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm not quite understanding, we filled out a form that listed what we had in our meetings, but I, I was under the impression that our board meetings attended were also for the benefit of the public, not just for each other, is that?
Yeah, and you can still go through, go through.
Okay, because I didn't know whether to go ahead and give my regular report or not.
Right, you can do, you can do your quick report, no problem.
Okay, well, I filled out the report, but I just wanted to make, I wanted to make sure I wasn't like messing up here, okay.
No problem.
Okay, thanks. Well, first of all, Lee Summit Educational Foundation, I'd like to report, we had, went to both those meetings this month, this last month. Our annual fund drive total so far is $86,806, that's what we have pledged in contributions for the coming year from our business partners and individuals throughout the district as well as employees so far. So that's a good, that's a really good start. Our goal's higher, but we're, it's a good start. The Race for the Future is coming up very soon, it's Saturday, October the 9th, it starts at 8:00 AM, it's Lee Summit West, and we could still use some volunteers to help us at various stations along the race route or helping with things like serving coffee and food and things like that at the race, so if anyone wants to volunteer, we will, we would love to have your help, and you can find that on the LSEF website, you could just fill out a form. And we're still accepting registrations, our registrations are below what we had last year, and if, you know, you want to race, that's great, but if you don't want to race and you just want to sleep in, you can support the foundation and, and our pursuits to help our kids and our teachers by being a dream partner, and you just pay your race fee and you sleep in. It's pretty, it's pretty simple, but you could just visit the HTTPS, the runsignup.com/race. But you could just visit the HTTPS, the runsignup.com/race/mo/leesummit/raceforthefuture. Look up Race for the Future, you'll find it. We also partnered, the foundation also partnered on a breakfast this past month. It was an event in conjunction with our Partners in Education and Diploma Plus program. And outside of Lee Summit Educational Foundation and LSR seven staff members, there were about 70 people in attendance. So it was very well attended over at the Missouri Innovation Campus and we made some great connections with many of the businesses around town to help support our schools. And so that's great progress. LSEF is working diligently in gaining sponsorships through Friends of the Foundation program. So we're still working on that. And if you know any businesses or individuals who'd like to be a friend, please let us know. The second item I'd like to report on is Team Lee Summit. Team Lee Summit had its first meeting of the school year on September the 23rd. And it's my first year to be actually appointed to Team Lee Summit. It's my fourth year on the board, but my first year to serve on that committee. And I'm very honored to do so because, you know, as they mentioned in Team Lee Summit, it's always seems like for those of the staff members in the district who've never been into a Team Lee Summit meeting, that it's sort of mysterious. What do they do on Team Lee Summit? Well, Team Lee Summit, we got a great start thanks to our facilitator, Judy Sklerstein. And basically, just we had a lot of information presented at the meeting in preparation for that annual Team Lee Summit survey that goes out to all of our staff members. And there will be subsequent recommendations that'll come from the information that we glean from those surveys from our staff. So it's basically to help guide us in the, in the coming year to know what we need to do. Other than that, I think almost all of us, most of us attended the mayor's State of the City address on September the 10th. And that was a good address. It was great to hear that progress being made in our city. We had the Boundary Team Engagement Series. I went to that one on September 8th, the PLMS. So it's just been a really busy start to the school year. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Fritchy. Board Member Hendrick?
I attended two Board Policy Committee meetings since our last board meeting. One was August, on August 30th and the other one was yesterday afternoon. Our team, first meeting of the year was on August 30th. We did introductions because we have several new team members this year. We reviewed the charge of the team. We talked about our process for this year and that the focus of the team's work is going to be board policies that are in the G series, which deal with personnel. We developed a tracking system for committee recommendations and actions. And we reviewed some of the policies, GB through GBA on August 30th. And then last, yesterday's meeting, we started with GBA and went through GBEAA. And then I also attended one of the boundary meetings. And then I also attended the Finance Committee meeting yesterday and I will be giving that report here shortly.
Thank you very much. Vice President Marshall?
Thank you, President Murdock. I attended two different meetings. One hosted by Lee Summit Cares and the other hosted by Rediscover, the Youth Mental Health Task Force Committee. And the, the message and the strategy for both those meetings are very well aligned because they work together. And it's all about making youth engagement a priority and finding ways to get resources and word out to the community about the services that Lee Summit Cares provides. And really just finding those members in the community who have not been reached yet to make them aware of all the services that Lee Summit Cares and Rediscover provides. So if they should need them, they know where to go. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just two things for me. We, Vice President Marshall and I had our monthly leadership meeting with Dr. Buck a few weeks ago now. So we'll actually be getting ready for the next one here, I believe, next week, since our next meeting comes up really quickly. And then I did participate in the Steering Committee meeting for CAC on August 30th. And I apologize to Katie for not being able to be at the CAC meeting last night. As a couple of things came up, I heard it was very good and I'm excited to learn more about that. So, so we'll get back at that. We are going to move on to 6.01, which is our Finance Committee report. And as noted, that will be Board Member Hendrick.
Thank you. Our committee met yesterday morning. As I, as indicated, we reviewed the list of contracts or of $15,000 in last. Purchasing staff also presented us the process they have completed to present the recommendation for hand soap and dispenser bid, which is the pure ozone. We reviewed the memorandum of understanding with Drum Farm, which provides a partnership between Drum Farm and the district to provide clinical mental health services and related support to students in the district identified by staff as homeless, at risk of homelessness, or facing significant housing instability. We also reviewed three contracts or awards to purchase actually that due to the lead time now of getting items delivered in the district, we are being asked to approve these, these purchases this evening. The first one was to Converge One for network equipment, for switches and wireless access points for East Trails Middle School and Lee Summit High School. The other two were for kitchen equipment, one for Bernard Campbell Middle School and Pleasantly Middle School. And it was kind of, what struck out to me when we were talking about this item was that Bernard Campbell Middle School, their items, their, their current equipment is 30, about 30 years old and Pleasantly Middle School's over 50 years. So probably time to replace both of those things. So they're doing that and we'll have that, have those new equipment when those buildings are for next school year. We also talked about a contract for athletic stadium graphics. The signage was originally included in the Monarch contract, but that contract was credited with approximately $31,000 and the signage package was rebid for cost efficiency. The rebid has resulted in the recommendation to award that work to Creative Image. We also reviewed the bond report this month. We talked about the revenue and expense report and the investment report. On the investments, approximately 85.7 is currently invested in the operating funds and the rest of the investments are related to our bond funds. The current fund balance is 26.66% in the operating funds. And then the other thing we talked about related to finance was the process for the, setting the tax rate for the 2122 school year. So I'll stop unless there's any questions. I'm...
I don't think so. I think you can go ahead and move on to our three motions.
Okay, so I will move to approve the transfer of $90,766.06 from the general fund to the special revenue fund.
Second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second for 6.02, for the transfer of funds. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I move to approve the Treasury, Treasurers Report and Payment of the Bills.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 6.03 to approve the Treasurers Report and Pay the Bills. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And last one.
I move to approve the tax rate of 4.3637 for the general fund, 5 cents for the Capital Projects Fund, and 1.07 for the Debt Service Fund, for a total levy for the 2122 school year of 5.4837.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for 6.04 for the approval of the tax rate for 2122 school year. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye?
Board Member Campbell?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Dr. Hendrick. Appreciate that. We are going to move on to Item 7. This is our consent agenda for tonight. And as board members have probably noted, this is where if there's any discussion on any of the consent agenda items for tonight or any of those items that you would like pulled, this is your chance to voice that now. Otherwise, we will take a motion to vote on all of the consent agenda items. Board Member Sparks?
So there is nothing that I won't pull. However, I just want to highlight 7 point... Darn it. How am I missing it? It has to be right in my face.
Okay, that's fine. Sounds good. All right, so we need a motion then for, to dispose of these items.
I move to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all of the consent agenda items, 7.01 to 7.15, I believe it is, tonight. Board Member Sparks, did you find it?
I found it.
Excellent.
7.5. I just wanted to highlight, well, I actually have a question on this one. Is that okay for me to ask the question? I'm not objecting to it. It's just more so a question that I think is in order for the public to know.
Okay.
So basically, the question that I have is, I know that this is in the efforts of helping the homeless and it was stated more so in the secondary high school students. The referral process, I know that it was in the Finance Committee, I was able to learn that the referral process is coming from building. But then also, I believe it was Dr. Hendrick that asked the question, can the student kind of come forth themselves? And basically, basically, our parents come forth and say that they basically need help. And so, other than those being the two options, either the families coming forth or the staff person needing assistance, are we preparing our counselors to also be a referral asset in this program? Okay, thank you.
For all those at home, that was a thumbs up to that question. So there you go. Okay, we have a motion and a second for consent agenda items. So Ms. Ismerd, I think with the rest of these, we'll do, well, I think this is actually our last one, so, for tonight. So you know what, we will just do a raise your hand and say aye. Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I messed that one up. I apologize. I caught everybody off guard by that one. So, sorry about that. That's right. Okay, we are going to move on. We have no items for decision tonight. So we are at Item 9, which is our Business Services Program Evaluation, and that will be Mr. Holder.
Hello again. It's my pleasure tonight to present the Annual Business Services Program Evaluation for the 2020-21 school year. So I'd like to start off just by giving a little bit of a structure to, to our Business Services team. Dr. Miller, the head of our Assistant Superintendent of Operational Services and the Business Services Department falls under that. Then you see three coordinators. We essentially have three primary areas in Business Services. Accounting, benefits, and well-being, and then our payroll services. The individuals that serve in the leadership capacity for payroll is Deanna Keller. Sarah McMillan is our Coordinator of Benefits and Well-being Services. And then Sharon Smith is the Coordinator of Accounting Services. The rest of our team on the top row, Barb Rogers, Cheryl Gillespie, Kelly Davis, and Sandy Nail, all work as part of our accounting team, performing various functions. Erin Jensen and Charlie Minton, the first two from left to right on the bottom row, are in our benefits program. And then we also have a new addition that was effective tonight. Desiree Schlotterer is taking over as part of our benefits team as well as our well-being coordinator. So we don't have a picture for her because she's just approved, but we'd like to welcome Desiree. And then Julie Ruling and Lindsay Roberts serve in our payroll department. If you look at the Business Services mission, "Business operations provide services to district staff and vendors and supports district business functions." The Business Services team, and then there's six bullet points there. And I think it, you can obviously see what those six bullet points are, but I think to highlight the first one, you know, 2 through 6 obviously are things that we strive for and there's areas that, of course, we want to improve in. But it's something that is continuously, something that we want to improve. The first bullet point, I think, is without a doubt, something that our office does. And the 12 individuals that you saw on the previous slides help do that every single day. And so a lot of the data, and there is a lot of numbers that I'm going to go through and I apologize for that, but I think it does a good job of highlighting, over the course of the year, a lot of the functions that, that they perform. So we'll start with our accounting program. The assisting with the annual budget, long-range budget planning, our annual audit process, which we just went through last week. Our auditors were here over the course of a week. Account code structure. This seems like a mundane item for compliance with federal and state and local requirements, but I can assure you, with changes at the state level in the way that funds are expected to be coded, not only the way revenue is received, but the way that expenses are, go out and the expectation that they be coded has changed quite a bit in the last five years. And so that is something that our office still works with on, on almost a daily basis sometimes. The budget managers throughout our district, our office supports those staff members, reconciling those fiscal budgets and the account balances, making sure that we stay within our budgeted areas. Recording of all the revenues and expenses, including any adjusting journal entries, budget transfers. And then the last one, the, the reporting for federal, state, and/or local requirements, which can be, again, as I highlighted above, can be quite onerous in making sure that all of those funds are accounted for and coded in the right areas. Just a quick overview, a reminder of our 2020-21 budget. This is a final budget. You can see our total there of just over $326 million and how that breaks out into operations, restricted capital projects, which includes our bond fund, tax levy from last year, and the assessed valuation. I will say that as a comparison, 2122, our total budget is $393 million. Now, the reason for that is primarily because of our bonds. The bond issue that was approved in 2020, that's really ramping up. It got started last year in 2021, but this year, it's really ramped up. And of course, all the projects that we've seen and had reports on, a large majority of those funds will hopefully be spent in the 2122 school year. Some more numbers from our accounting department. 4,548 vendor payments were issued in 2021. We have currently active 17,072 active vendors. Staff reimbursements for mileage, business, business expenses, travel. And of course, this was down in 2021 because of COVID, but we still had 2,293 reimbursements. We are, we have 488 purchasing cards last year that were used. We, we also have been moving more towards e-payable vendors. Vendors that will allow us to pay with a P card, which means we get some reimbursement from that. And we have 190 of those. 27,754 transactions and that totaled, from just the P card program, $11.641 million in expenditures. Also, student credit card fee payments, you know, in the last five years especially, districts have tried to be responsive to this. It's not always the easiest thing to do from an accounting standpoint. But as you know, being able to pay with a card or online is an extremely popular way to pay. So we, we are trying to be responsive to that. And you can see that last year, 31,324 transactions, which totaled almost $1 million. which totaled almost a million dollars for those. And keep in mind, lunch and breakfast was free last year, so that reduces that number because, you know, other than à la carte, there wasn't near as many payments coming in for that service. Alright, next we have employee benefits. We have, "The district offers health, dental vision, life, EAP, short-term medical leave, long-term disability, long-term care." Our benefits department administers that for 2,700 employees, and if they cover their children or their spouses, those individuals as well. We, last year, our benefits team had an extensive, over the course of several months, with an RFP for medical plan funding. I know that's a huge undertaking, and that happened in the 2020-21 school year. We have over 600 retiree and/or Cobra insurance participants, and so we are the liaison in the benefit department for that. Monthly new hire orientations. Last year, 234 new hires went through the orientation process for benefits. The next bullet point is a big one. Again, several years ago, with ACA, especially in a district of this size, we're monitoring on a monthly and annual basis. We're looking at employees and making sure that anyone that qualifies for benefits under ACA is being offered those benefits. And so that's an undertaking that wasn't there seven years ago that is now there on a monthly and annual basis. Annual enrollment, of course, that's coming up for this school year. And then last year, obviously with COVID, the team was able to coordinate and implement rapid testing for all employees. In our complete health and wellness center, we completed an RFP for that in April of 2021. Retirement. We have just over 1,300 employees that participate in the peers retirement system, and almost 1,500 that are in PSRS. The difference there, anyone that is in PSRS, the second bullet there, is working with a certificate or a job that requires a teaching certificate. The peers system is still employees that are working at least 20 hours a week that are in a position that does not require a teaching certificate. On a monthly basis, about 3.2 million dollars goes into the retirement system between district and employee contributions combined. Oasis is the reporting system that retirement, and that's a fairly new system, at least within the last 10 years. And so it's a, it was a major overhaul with the retirement system, and so that is a reconciliation that occurs every payroll, but then especially at the end of the year, and that's part of the GASB-68 reconciliation. Just some more numbers there. 1095C, that goes back to the ACA. We are required to submit those every year, and we had 2,690. Processed 130 short-term medical leave claims, workers' compensation. We have, our benefits department handles that. And those can be obviously very small, but they can also be something that turns into a much larger situation that requires a lot of work, and so our, the benefits department processes all of those things. 403B, 457, we provide the administrative services for that, and we have 446 employees last year that contributed. That's a voluntary contribution that they make to those, either one of those plans. And HR, HSA, FSA participants, we had 2,180 of the 2,700 approximately that you saw earlier. We have 2,180 that participate in one of those three plans. That last point at the bottom is also something that definitely with COVID, we always have some section 125 issues to monitor, but a lot of the plan changes that came about because of COVID and extensions for things like FSA, that was something that our benefits department helped handle throughout 2020-21. Last slide for benefits department, our wellness program, our employee wellbeing program. Those are some numbers there that show the number of participants, and I will not go through that entire list, but I will say at the bottom, just, I think it's worth noting that 66% of those participants felt like that participating in one or multiple of those programming items helped them make some healthy lifestyle changes, which is ultimately what we want to help promote for our employees. Alright, last but not least, payroll. Last year, 3,825 employees were paid during the fiscal year, approximately 11 and a half million dollars in payroll. That includes monthly and quarterly and annual unemployment, and Department of Labor reporting, as well as employee garnishments. You see a breakdown there of exempt employees versus non-exempt student payroll, as well as hourly and other employees. We have a web-based time and attendance system that we use for making sure that we're compliant with all the state and federal labor laws. We, we do work really throughout the year with our human resources team, as well as data services, and especially Team Lease Summit, to make sure that we have accurate data for review. And then processing in 2021, 503 new hires, 388 transfers and changes, and 844 separations. Now, I will give a caveat there. Separations and, because I had a question when I saw that number, that includes over 200 hourly employees who, as part of our annual review, were employees. That doesn't mean we had 844 people leave last year, but some people would remain in our system and going through and reviewing and making sure that they were not active, then we remove them, so they're not active anymore. A quick look ahead for FY '22. One thing that we have rolled out already this fall is for new hires that come in, we've moved to an online module. We have received quite a bit of positive feedback on this. In the past, our office would go out, hold numerous meetings with employee groups, would happen on a monthly basis typically. So working with one of our vendors, we were able to create an online module that individuals can view at their own pace, at their own time preference, and go back and see it again. They're not just getting it one time. And again, we've had a lot of positive feedback from that process. East Trails Middle School, opening in '22-23, but in the '21-22 year, there is a lot that goes into that in making sure that from our department in all three areas that we're prepared for opening that school. This year, we've got an RFP for banking and HSA services. That's a big deal, especially in our department with the banking vendor, because there is so much that happens, in particular between our accounting department and whoever we select for those depository services. Business plus upgrade, that is on our radar. Again, that has a big impact throughout the district, but especially on business services, and we're hopeful November 1st is the tentative timeline for an upgrade there. And then the last item, I would say, the 2021 bond issuance, which is coming up, and just to be clear, that's not a new bond issue. It's the second piece of the bonds that were approved by the voters in 2020, and we will be issuing those in the next couple of months, which is always exciting because it means we are looking forward to completing the projects that we have going now, as well as several new projects that we don't have started yet, that we will be able to get started after those are issued. We just had a ratings call last Friday, which went very well, and so we're anxious to see how that comes out as well. Last thing I would say is, thank you, and it is our privilege to serve the staff and the students. I try to reiterate with our department that although business services is oftentimes about as far away as you can get from having that student interaction, we still, ultimately, our mission is to help the 18,000 students pre-K through 12 that we have in Lee's Summit. And so, always try to keep that in mind, even though a lot of our day-to-day tasks don't feel like that all the time. So, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Any questions? Board member Sparks?
I just have one, and that is from your payroll slide. I know that it was like 4% for student payroll. Can you explain what that is? Like, what is student payroll? Like, what, why would we be paying students?
No, good question. So student workers, and my understanding is that a lot of that comes through our CBE program at the high school, where we actually provide opportunities for students to go throughout the district and gain practical experience and work in different locations in Lee's Summit.
We also have kids that work at our pool, or kids who work in our bass program.
Does that, does that go through the same hiring process through HR department? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Board member Fritchie?
Thank you, President Murdock. I just always am very in awe of all of the things that business services does for our district, both, you know, our schools, our staff, and our students. You guys do great work, and I wanted to thank each and every employee that you highlighted here this evening. And I just gotta say, every time I walk into business services, I see smiles on faces. It's really cool to walk in there and see them, and even though I know that they, particularly at certain times of the month, they're very, you know, with payroll and all, they're very stressed out, or it's time to renew insurance, and they're pulling their hair out, or they're working extra hours. They're always kind, they're always professional. They literally keep the wheels on the bus, I think, for us, by paying all of our employees, making sure they have their insurance and benefits, and just conducting the business of the district. So I know you're probably a department that does not get recognized very much. You're the behind-the-scenes people. Like you said, you're maybe the furthest away, but you really do do so much for our district and our students, and so thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll be sure to pass that along.
Any other comments or questions? Board member Sparks?
Sorry, I have one more question. Are RFPs, are most of them through your department? Are most of them processed?
RFPs, actually, most of our RFPs go through our purchasing department.
Purchasing department, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Holder, it's been a busy night for you, but got you through, so thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. We're moving to our final item tonight, which is item 10. This is our items of information. We have four written reports tonight. And before I even ask board members if you want to comment on any of them, I did want to highlight, because we talked about that we would highlight this, in 10.01, which is our Board of Education Legal Counsel. As some in the public may be aware, we had some work sessions on this item. And then, if you followed any of that, we did, as a board, agree that we wanted to meet with the firms before selecting a firm who would actually represent us as a Board of Education. And so, in August, when we approved four different firms that the district could go to, the board felt that it was necessary and important for us to meet with those firms and then decide counsel just for the Board of Education. We held interviews on, I believe, September 2nd. I believe that's right. And then, so we did want to announce tonight that the board did vote to approve Spencer Fain as the firm who will provide legal counsel to the Board of Education. But like we said in August, we still have the suite of firms that is available to the entire district. So we did want to make sure and kind of follow up and close that loop for those who followed that, maybe in some of the work sessions. Are there any comments on any of the written reports tonight? I'm gonna steal one before you, just in case, because if you're gonna do this one, then I, I'm gonna get, I wanna beat you to it one time. I did want to make a comment on 10.04, the nutrition services program evaluation. And not necessarily just about the evaluation. I just wanted to commend our nutrition services in a time when we are facing shortages across the entire region, the state, and the country in terms of getting supplies in that department. And Lori Donella, I just wanted to say, we appreciate you very much for getting those services continued. That is a really, really good job under some pretty adverse circumstances in terms of supply chain shortages that are going throughout the country. So I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted that and said thanks. Board member Fritchie?
You know, I can't get away without saying some good things about some people here in these reports, because they take a lot of time and effort to put together these reports for us, and I feel like just, you know, just breezing by them is just not adequate for all of the good work that our folks are doing. Just wanted to highlight a couple of things. First of all, on the board priorities update. This is something new that we have just started this month, and I really like this new format. I think it provides the board a good look at how the individual schools are working towards achieving our three board priorities. And this month, it was really great to be able to hear from Mason Elementary, Lee Summit West, and Summit Ridge Academy. So I would just like to thank everyone who contributed to that report, and I look forward to reading those reports every month. I know it's more trouble for you, it's more work, but thank you for doing that. Okay, then, of course, I figured Lori Donella would be here tonight. I don't see her. She's not. Oh, hi, great, great. Thank you. Glad you're here. I always find this report that Nutrition Services and Lori submit to be so informative, because, I mean, there's just, there's brimming over with all of the energy that comes from this department. The highlights for me were the farm-to-school initiative that Nutrition Services has implemented and prioritized, and the goal of having the garden bars in each of our schools in the district. And then, and also, the weekly schmores newsletters that go out to the department, and that she said in the report that are read by 100% of the employees. They've got a click rate on there, I guess, or something, but, so they can tell that when the employees read them. So that's awesome. And I wish there was some way that, though, that we could help our nutrition services recruit more employees for this program because of current shortages. I know we've still got some shortages on that, and we're having a hard time finding enough great people to help us serve our students in our schools. I see that that's a goal this year that Lori listed in her report. And just Nutrition Services, you have my sincere appreciation, because in the past year, you have not allowed rain, hail, snow, and blazing temperatures, or a pandemic to prevent you from delivering meals to the students all over our district. And I think that is just the most admirable thing, that we've been able to feed our kids throughout the year. And you've just, they've just, when there's a wall, they figure out a way to go around it, and they've just done it. Kudos.
Thank you, Board member Fritchie. Any other comments?
Love comments.
Alright, Board member Campbell?
Great, thank you. Board President Murdock and Board member Fritchie, you stole a lot of my thunder. I feel the same way. Love the written report on the board priorities update. Really appreciated the individual schools and identifying the work there, the hard work they're doing at the building level that feed up to our board priorities. I also appreciated the great updates around a lot of the equity work that is going on and continuing to progress on, as well as the hard work that is being done across the district to really identify where our students are at in their learning and their achievement, and where there are gaps, and how we can support them. So I was excited to see updates around all of those things. And I share also around our nutrition services, thank you so much to Lori Donella for her leadership. You know, I was excited to see, again, thank you to all of the employees, staff around, work done during the COVID pandemic, but also all the additional work that is being done and continues to be focused on. The training, the newsletter, you know, everything to support those employees. I just really appreciate all that hard work. So just want to say thank you around that.
Thank you very much, Board member Campbell.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, one hour, 15 minutes. Come on now. So, this meeting is adjourned. We will see you all. We will see you all next month. Thank you.